Good evening, and I guess I should introduce my combat. Anyone who's in the pledge?
I take the lead in favor of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is since one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if I may ask you, with the huge expanding, very sad day today here in the village, we lost two wonderful, wonderful women. Annette Giacomo, the mother of Denise Longavanti, and mother-in-law of our mayor, and Louise Longavanti, the mother of our mayor, the mother of former chief Michael Longavanti, and sister of former mayor Gloria. Right, could I ask her for a couple moments, please?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. We're going to get out of meeting now. Am I creating an error? Before I can only say... Now I am? Is that all? Is that better? All right, I'm going to sign off for this.
You just need to stop on some...
I know. I knew it was a great thing.
Yeah, but definitely mayor of all England, isn't it?
Okay, before we begin our meeting, I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate three very special people on a victory last night for them. Of course, it is our two trustees, Frank Ciara and Dr. Lynn Bombaño, and our new and incoming mayor, Kevin Fitzgerald. You can't find three more dedicated people, and they deserved to win yesterday's election. I am honored to be working with them, and I know they will lead Flore Park into a wonderful future. So, along with trustee Archie Chang, who didn't have to run yesterday, but he's very happy about that. But I'm going to thank them all and congratulate them all, and I know it's going to be a great future when I'm incoming there. So, with that, we will now ask Ms. Walsh to move the agenda and leave the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Longavanti. I would ask the board to approve the regular board meeting that was held on March 2nd, 2021, the public information meeting, police report minutes, held on March 3rd, 2021, and the board question that was held on March 11th, 2021.
Submove.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please, Kevin.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the county's payable as follows. General fund: $1,0231,498.61. Full fund: $48,200. Capital funds: $481.71. total of $1,0232,020.71.
I will second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to certify the 2029-22 financial assessment on the quarters with the real property tax for Section 1410.
I'll offer a resolution. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to acknowledge and receive the Village of Flore Park financial statement as of May 31st, 2021.
I'll offer a resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti. I would ask the board to surplus the 1989 John Deere paynote with a very long VIN number and wash it.
And a very long, polite key. I'll offer the resolution.
I don't know why we can't keep this. Anything you do?
I'll take it.
Sorry, everybody knows we have a lot of hanging down equipment from our parks. And Kurt in recreation always winds up as the last one to get building equipment. To him, this is brain damage, so you can just send that away. In the meantime, Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to award the yard waste bid contract to Westbury Paper Stock and Co., as a legitimate ministry of all mayors to sign this contract. I'll offer a resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to introduce proposed local law number 1 of 2021 to authorize the Village Board, if necessary, to override the tax cap imposed by the state of New York, which is presently 2.54% for Flore Park.
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to moving proposed local law number 1 of 2021, authorizing the Village Board, if necessary, to override the tax cap imposed by the state of New York, which is presently 2.54% for Flore Park, is an unlisted action and will not have a significant effect on the environment as that term is defined in CBR.
I'll offer the resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to accept the resignation of Kyle Delgado, a labor and public works department effective March 12th, 2021, and authorize payment of his printed rules in accordance with CSEA contract as presented.
I'll offer the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the request for use of public facilities as presented. Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please, Kevin.
I would ask the board to approve John Paul Chomney as a new member of the Flore Park Volunteer Department since he received medical clearance and background check by the Flore Park Police Department.
I'll offer that resolution and vote aye.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to adopt the resolution to add school speed limits in accordance with Chatton 96-6 on Plainfield Avenue at the intersection between Tulob Avenue and Vanderbilt Avenue in the direction of north and south at a speed limit of 20 miles per hour.
I'll offer the resolution. Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to permit the National County Board of Elections to use the lines by a house for a polling location for the primary elections on Tuesday, June 22nd, and June general elections on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, at a fee of $70 per day, and to authorize the village court to sign the polling place here.
I'll offer the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to adopt the final Flore Park Police Report and reinvention, reinvention collaborative plan, and submit final report to the state of New York no later than April 1st, 2021.
I'll offer that resolution. And I will say that...
Is there any discussion? I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of the members of our police department who worked on this, all of the members of the volunteer committee, again trustee Frank Ciara for chairing that committee in getting this done, as well as all of the residents and members of our communities who commented and took time to take part in this process. Thank you all very much, and I will vote aye. Do you need that today in the heads for a vote from anybody?
You need to vote. Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
He's going to say aye twice.
Yeah. How to get it away?
So... I would ask the board to authorize the planning of the two presented tax subsidiary settlements.
I'll offer the resolution. Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Trustee Chang. Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the taxi fare licenses from AAA taxi listed below since each driver has to receive payments from the Flore Park Service.
I'll offer the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longavanti.
Aye.
And may I add that on behalf of administration, building, court, library, police, public works, and recreation departments, that we wish you, Denise, and your entire family best and that you will be sold missed. Thank you.
Susan. Oh, missed O. You missed O. On the record. Letter O on the record.
James Curry.
James Curry.
I would ask the board to approve James Curry, a hard-time laborer, to be hired as a full-time laborer at the Public Works Department at a contractable rate of $7,272, as per CSNA Florida Department and subject to the civil service guidelines.
I'll offer that resolution. It's not your fault, Susan, you're the mayor, and you're by voting.
That's true.
He's holding me. I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please forward?
Trustee D'Cherl.
Aye.
Trustee Cambani.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor.
For the last time, as in the mood, let me vote aye. Thank you, Susan. Thank you for everything you've always been keeping us on track. And with that, we go to order this and we start there. Trustee Dr. Longavanti.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to offer my suffocation to Dominic Denise Prista Nick on the loss of Denise Longavanti, and to them, Travis, Mr. Longavanti, and Michael M. Paddy on the loss of our daughter. Thank you. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out to vote in yesterday's election. It is an honor for Mayor Electus, General Trustee Chair, and I to serve you for two more years alone as trustee chair. The Recreation Department. Spring is coming to the rec center, including Centennial Gardens. Basketball has returned to the park under New guidelines. Ten may play full court and six will see on three half court. Spectators should wear masks. Expect to be in opening volleyball soon. Parkgoers should carry their 2021 resident wish passes or 2022 passes. Flore Park will be released from its one season within April 30, traveling through all four areas of the village on Saturday, April 17. Following the craze deciding pitch hit and run contest in home on Derby and technical at the park, all adhering to the league protocols following the CDC and Board of Health regulations. Looking farther into spring, we hope to open the pool on time and already updated CDC and Board of Health regulations for the 2021 season. I'd also like to welcome our recreation director, Mayor, who is here and also she supervises and we thank them for all they've done for wonderful fall, winter, and spring seasons, and we look forward to seeing lots more of them as we approach summer. The Conservation Society volunteers, Parks Department, Department of Public Works, and Comcat Landscape, are getting some Centennial Gardens ready for the April 1st opening. Over 500 guests visited the gardens on Thanksgiving weekend 2020 before it closed for the winter. We look forward to all 500 and more returning for 2021. Our Garden for Kids Winter-Spring Recreation Program for those ages 3 through 10, great program, begins at the gardens this Saturday, March 20th. Lots of fun for all exploring nature. And the Food Day of the Chamber of Commerce and our businesses. As you know, the architectural new board, ARB, approved the designs in the building which will replace 10 of the businesses that sustained severe fire damage on September 27. The new design is one story higher with similar architectural features as the other businesses on the street. Our Building Department expects that the next round of construction drawings, including further structural details, interior fixtures, utilities, quote compliance, et cetera, are expected in the coming weeks. The Building Department and Department of Public Works have contacted the Minnesota County Department of Transportation to determine if there are viable options to the chamber fencing project surrounding the five properties and reconstruction area. To date, there is not been a response. Safety in front of the damaged businesses remains the highest priority. As we look forward to spring, please shop and dine local in beautiful weather. Word approval for outdoor dining at our Flore Park restaurants was effective this past Monday evening. So, everyone, enjoy.
Thank you. With that, we will trust you, Archie Chang.
For the Fire Department, unfortunately, another fire badly damaged a home yesterday evening. Our department, assisted by New High Park, Stewart Manor, South Flore Park, and Elmont, were at the scene, and again, we bore witness to their bravery and commitment. This home is in very close proximity to neighboring homes, and those neighboring homes did not suffer damage. The preliminary cause appears to be careless smoking. I urge all of our residents to practice fire safety, check smoking carbon monoxide detectors, be careful when using open flames or cooking, purchase a fire extinguisher, and have an evacuation plan in place in the event of a fire. The department is also actively recruiting new members. Training for new and longtime members has been curtailed due to pandemic. Each of our five companies are anxiously looking forward to the reopening of fire school this summer. This is a great time to join the department, become one of our great volunteers, and help all of our neighbors. Finally, please remember that the department is still in their fundraising season. Please contribute if you possibly can. Most of the month of February, Rescue 82, rest of the department 18. The Third Track, if you have not heard already, 3 TC to Third Track contractors have been shut down temporarily by the MTA due to two major incidents in the elderly regarding safety. The first incident was the demolition of an old structure while the workers were still inside. The track individuals had to escape through a window. Luckily, there were no injuries. The second involved the electrocution of a worker when it craned via high voltage line. That worker is in a hospital but is in stable condition. Due to this shutdown, my updates tonight, the dates are subject to change. First, 3 TC was planning to transport a new substation tomorrow through Flore Park via Tulob and Covet Avenue to New High Park, and that has been moved to next week. We do not have the date yet. Bird netting is still scheduled to be installed underneath the newly modified Plainfield Avenue Bridge, and intimate plane closures will be necessary to facilitate this work. As of this date, the elevator's have not been turned over to the MTA, and therefore, we cannot use them. So, I was right when I was talking about the winter of 2021, which starts in December. You're not calling it kid. Always before December. The long-awaited sound retaining wall construction behind the laws in Charles Street has also been delayed. The current plan now is subject to date changes as follows. During a complete track outage on the weekends of April 24th and June 10th, there will be drilling and the installation of a support post. This work is planned to be done all day and all night through that weekend. Approximately one month after that is completed, the installation of the actual sound retaining wall begin with a hopeful completion date of mid-August. And finally, any temporary utility poles you see on the village side of the main line right way will be removed during the first half of April. There are two in the park. One is behind the pool. One behind the hot drink, and there's one in right field above field. I always hear the number? Seven, thank you. Those three will be removed. There's one in the DPW yard that we just fixed up. They are being taken out. They will be taken out from the track side. And that's my report, then. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And for the last time, I get to call him this? Baby trustee? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
First, I'd like to offer my condolences to the whole Longavanti family. Just noted you and my family. You're all my cousin friends. So, at the library, the crew committee, in conjunction with the library and Recreation Center, is offering a children's workshop, a series on social and emotional learning. It is an interactive workshop tailored for children ages 6 through 8 with the focus on establishing self-management, relationship-building, and conflict-resolution skills. The presenter is Teresa Stenelis, a New York State certified school psychologist. It will be held at the rec center on Mondays from 4:00 to 4:45 p.m., starting on March 29th through May 24th. Registration is required, and there is a limitation of other participants. You can do so by going to floreparklaundry website, floreparklaundry.org. Yes, are required, and social distancing will be enforced. The library is now busy planning outdoor lawn programs beginning in May. Please check the library's calendar of events for future info. For our police department, tonight we adopted a resolution to increase the area of the school speed zone, now running from Vanderbilt to Tulob Avenue on Plainfield Avenue. The current old speed zone ran from Vanderbilt to Miller Avenue. This resolution was adopted to increase safety on Plainfield Avenue with the hope of avoiding any future accidents. The safety of our students attending Flore Park Memorial and now our lady of victim and all our residents always is a major concern to our police department and our village board. The posted speed limit will be 20 miles per hour during school hours from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thank you to Commissioner McAllister for moving this action along. The New York State Reform and Reimbalance Collaborative Process has been completed, and now, after the board ratified it tonight, will be sent out to Albany by April 1st. I would like to thank our police department, our committee members, all the residents that participated in the process. Your participation made it a valuable process. The document illustrates how fortunate we are to have a well-trained community service police department keeping our community safe and continually being recognized as one of the safest places in the country. Thank you to our police department. We all support you, and we recognize the value of your service to our community. For the Building Department, I just want to let you know that the construction of Flore Building will commence on April 1st, and it will be periodic closing on the avenue. It's going to be totally repaved. There is some more work being done on the curbs and the sewerage, but it should be done in the next couple months. A notification will be sent out to residents of Flore Boulevard and the rest of our residents and community. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Lynn and Kevin on their victories last night. I'm really looking forward to work with you guys and thank everybody in the Citizen Party and all the residents in our community that showed their support by voting for us. Thank you very much.
Sir, with that, Mayor Elect, Kevin Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things. Just like to thank all the residents who came out yesterday to vote for trustee Cambani, trustee Chair, and myself. That's truly humbling, and more thank yous to follow on radio tonight. And regards to DPW, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's a tree planting season. So, anyone who would like a tree, please reach out to DPW. And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if it all the way out of other, And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could go all the way out on other? I think a few of us have a couple of things to say. If you don't mind, I could send it back to the doctor.
Thank you, Mayor-elect. Dominic, tonight we are here to honor you, salute you, recognize you, and thank you, express our love and best wishes to you and so much more. You have been a passionate advocate, strong force, skilled leader, and cherished friend with your whole true entire life. With about 16,000 residents and many more business owners here, I bet almost all of us can tell a story, many very humorous, I'm sure, about how Mayor O'Nagarty or Dominic has been there for us and touched our lives in truly significant ways. Personally, I go back 30 years exactly to 1991 with Dominic Denise and the spaghetti dinner that I think was held in Centennial Hall. Time brings many amazing surprises. Through the years of coming to Floor Park to visit for wonderful events and adventures, to later working with Rusty O'Nagarty as he fiercely supported our students, school district, and education, and many joyful moments with Nick and Krista at the Floor Park Bel Air School and Floor Park Memorial, then Scranton. And now, many of us have been blessed to be there as Dominic and Denise's family grew up. One never knows where you'll end up. Dominic sitting beside you at this day as for the past six and a half years is something I never would have imagined in a million years, but it was portrayed for anything. To the village board and this entire village, you have been a great leader and cherished friend. You and former Mayor Green have promised to return to the back of this room on first and third Tuesday of every Monday. Anytime.
So, so.
So, possibly. And in addition, possibly throwing at us if we deserve it. We'll welcome that with lots of moments. We wish you and Denise, Nick, Krista, and your dad, also known as Emir Gil. This and may your and your beautiful extended family be blessed with all that you have given us. We will lovingly remember, Annette and Denise. You will all hold a special place in our village, our lives, and our, our spoils. God bless.
Trustee Charlie?
Hard to follow. Too good out there.
Just wait.
Between the Floor Park Bel Air School Board, Salonic Central High School Board, and our village board, I have had the honor and pleasure of representing the residents of our great village for approximately 24 years. I have worked with school board presidents who worked hard and accomplished great things. But I have also worked with school board members who wanted to be president to be able to title. I am happy to say that our president here is one that worked hard and accomplished great things. As Dominic says to you, the reality is, our village has been blessed to have Dominic on Friday for our mayor for the past four years as a trustee since 2009. The reality is Dominic simplifies what it takes to be a civic, to be a leader. He is civic-minded, has business acumen, is engaged in many different organizations, has demonstrated his ability to understand the pulse of our village, to reflect on issues, and select the right and best course of action. And then to roll up his sleeves and put in the hard work required to achieve his vision and truly represent our village residents. I won't say it, but more importantly, he has the ability to work together with our tight-skinned personalities to accept compromise and work towards consensus and implement ideas. He may not necessarily agree with the board decision, but has always been willing to accept that decision because it is based on our collective experience and the differing viewpoints that all rank to the table. And truly, the reality is, Don, it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you these past five years. And my best wishes to you and your family.
Don, reality is with you tonight. Thank you for what you have done and I shall continue to do for this village. But we intend you to have touched just about everything that is going on here and you made this village a better place to live. As you often mention, growing up here in the village, it was always your dream to be of service and become the mayor. We are so very fortunate that that dream came true. Your passion and commitment is always apparent whenever you speak about the village. Even though you try to cut your short at times. There is no better spokesman or cheerleader for our forest village. We know the history of our village and the long, much-lived experience is invaluable. I know that you will always be here for us and continue to share your wisdom with us. Every team has a leader guiding the team through ups and downs. You are a proud, prudent leader, great leader, allowing your team to give opinions, listening to what they're saying, and then formulating plans moving forward. It's a great way to accomplish your goal. I have been very fortunate to be mentored by you. I may, maybe you always feel that I was one of this great team. You guided me and allowed me to grow into this trustee position. And I may not be willing to give up the trustee title. But as the baby trustee, I thank you for, and thank you, and I can't thank you enough for nurturing me and sharing everything that you did for me. And allowing me to grow and serve our community. You are proven to this board and our village. You have, you have brought this board and our village a strong foundation. And without addition, we will continue to work forward in your name. But Chiara, Kevin, myself cannot thank you enough, you and your family, for your service to this wonderful village. And most importantly, your friendship to me and my family. God bless you and thank you very much for your service.
That was a specific. Mrs. Public Service, you know, we still have these. This is the man. If this is your last one year as mayor, I would like to take a few minutes to look back on the term. As often said, it's not the destination, but the journey. Not sure that there's a better way to describe the term than that. During this memorable journey, not only have we been together, which I'll remember as a learning experience on a whole host of topics both village-related and personal. I will also fondly remember the numerous laughs we shared. However, I do believe that most importantly, during the past four years, you were able to keep all the things that we cherished at our Floor Park the same while adapting to the changing world around us with some significant changes. You were able to strategically and successfully tackle significant uncoordinated challenges that we have faced in this village. Floor Park is certainly that place for your service. In closing, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to be a part of this truly unbelievable rock. Thank you and your family, and to your family, for your time, efforts, and personal sacrifices that you have made on behalf of Floor Park and its residents. And lastly, thank you for your firmship. It is a priceless commodity of all this treasure.
All you've already given me the look. And then you said this. Thank you for the work. But everything that you've said couldn't have been done without a wonderful and terrific group of people around you. You don't do this by yourself by any means. Today's been a really tough day for my family. We have always stuck together. And that's one thing I can say about this village, is that we've always stuck together to make things happen. I want to start with the staff here, the entire staff in this village. There isn't a person here who doesn't care, who doesn't work hard, who doesn't try their best every day to make this the most special place it can be. We are so lucky to have the people working here that we do. On top of that, we have a phenomenal group of volunteers who come in as members of this community to act on committees and do the things that they have to do to make Floor Park what it is. Giving them input, taking their time, taking their time away from their families without any, any remuneration or anything to them to just, because they care and they want to do the right thing for Floor Park and guide it towards the future. And all of the volunteers that have done that are from all the times I've been on the boards and all the committees that I've been associated with here. One better than the next, just trying and working. And I thank them from the bottom of my heart. The administrative staff here in this village, all the departments. Each and every one of you should be beyond proud of what you do every day. Kirk, Dan, Recreation, Tommy at the pool. Thank you guys very much. It is one of the most special places anywhere in any community. We are so blessed to have what we have. And every year, you guys make it better. Keep doing that, whatever you do, thank you so much. Steve, our police commissioner. We have the, we live in the safest community. I've said it before, I'll say it again. We are so blessed to be in this community and have one, be best police department that you can ever have anywhere. It's due to the leadership. I thank you and your staff for everything that you do. On every level, being there for every single person in this community and being there to protect them. To our volunteer fire department, our volunteer firefighters, and I know the chiefs are busy tonight. From the chiefs starting, one of the greatest things I ever had happen when I became mayor, the first thing I got to do was swear in the new chief. And while he's been by my side every step of the way. That night was very special, not only to me, but to my mom and my dad and our entire family, Michael, and all of the fire department. Everything that you do, day in and day out. You're there, night and day, training, doing the things that you have to do to make sure that everybody is safe and protected. We have an absolutely wonderful library in our village. Pat Aaron and Hart Staff and the library board, the things that they do every day to create a special place for people to go, the culture that we have, the things that they want to do to protect Floor Park. Not only that, but give us a special place for people to go and relax and do anything themselves and bring something special to us. They do a fantastic job. We had our building department, Renee, where are you? Renee, thank you. Renee came in here, is it two years ago or a year?
A year and a half.
A year and a half, perfect. Time flies. Renee came in a year and a half ago. I worked bravely with her predecessor, Steve Solinsky. And then Renee comes in and turns the whole place upside down for the better. For the better. All the things that they do, everybody here, their most precious commodity, their single, probably most single expenses they own. And Renee and her staff take care of that for them and make sure not only is it a safe place for them to live, but takes care of what it is to keep our community as beautiful as it is. So, thank you Renee for everything. Renee also doesn't stop at the building department. She gets involved in so many other things that we're doing in this community with her talents and her acumen, and I thank you for that. Sitting next to her, the guy who keeps the lights on, toilet paper in the bathrooms, making sure that we have, we have everything else that we need from, I'm not going to ruin my reputation on trees, but he makes sure we have trees. And all the other things, roads, garbage, everything you can think of. I will not mention our floor boulevard, snuff. But again, his, Kevin, thank you for all that you do. Thank you for everything you do for our residents. This is the guy who personifies what it means to be a public servant, going to all of our residents whenever there's an issue, making sure he's the one who talks to them, making sure he's the one who understands. And fantastic, thank you so much. We bought a new assessor a couple of years ago. And here's a guy who so far, thankfully, has raised our assessment every year since he came in, which is a great thing. But also for all what you do, Mike, thank you very much for everything. Mike Derby, our assessor, and all the work that he does. To the staff that I worked very closely with on the first floor of the patrol. Several of them are here tonight. Rose, thank you, I know you just came in very shortly, but has worked day and night to make sure that our village is. Courtney's here, she's our newest find and hopefully stays with us for a very long time. I am sorry that Dominic and Susan give you so much for everything. But no, I'm just kidding. But thank you so much for everything. Dominic, I can't. I don't, I don't want to say. We can be here for a bit sometime. And then very people that I work very closely with every day that have to put up with me because I'm the one who tells them what I, my stupidity and my, the things that I want to see done and they got to send it to everybody to do the things that they do. And that, of course, Susan, thank you for everything. I can't ever thank you enough for being there day in and day out. Anytime I call, anytime, the guidance they give, reminding me what's, we've done, reminding me what's important here and all the things that you do, thank you so much.
It's a pleasure to serve.
I can't tell you, I can't tell you all that that means. And Jerry, Jerry, this village would not run without you. Jerry gives, and I know I've said this before, but the countless hours that Jerry is here and doing the things that he does for all of us. It's just unbelievable the way his mind thinks, the things that he never forgets, the things that he wants to make sure, his details that are covered day in and day out. Every little, every little thing that has to be thought of, Jerry thinks that it makes it happen. I, thank you for being by my side, doing this whole thing.
Thank you, I did a great job.
Thank you, thank you for everything. To the guy who's kept us all out of jail all these years. To, you know, there are times where we've had major discussions, not quite sure where we wanted to go with something. And then the level head at the other end of the table tells me, this is what I think you should do, or tells us, this is what I would do. Sometimes, we didn't listen. We should, but we did. But I want John, thank you for being our village attorney. John Ryan, thank you so much for everything, day in and day out.
Basically, it was a nice one.
Did a great job.
We were so lucky to be with you doing this. John and I have known each other for many, many years and many other things that we do, and I'm so blessed to have him with us. But to the four people who I could never have done this without. And that is the four people sitting here. We created a team. We created a group of people that just made so many things happen for so many, for so many years. Every day, something came up. When I became mayor, two days later, the third track hit. Belmont, COVID. We never actually got to doing anything we were supposed to do. But I will tell you that these four people live and breathe this village. You couldn't ask, and I've worked with many public servants over the years and elected officials. You couldn't ask for a more wonderful group of people who are going to care about this village. I am truly honored and blessed to be with you every day. I can't tell you how much I'm going to miss the interaction of everything that's happening every day. But I will tell you that I am here for you and I am here for whatever you need. Denise is going to kill me, but whatever else you want to do. But I am here. At the same time, I have no doubt that this village is in the best hands it could possibly be in. And I thank you so much for making this one of the most special journeys that I could have possibly had, doing this. And that goes for each and every one of you and every one of the people in this, in this wonderful community. Floor Park is the greatest place to live, work, and raise a family. We can never have it better. And everything we do is about family. And I have the greatest family in Dublin. I have the most wonderful group of people surrounding me that supported me, that made everything happen, and gave me my dream. And I can't thank you guys enough. But most importantly, I have to thank my two children who sacrificed so much of me missing things, missing something simple as dinner. And I want to thank them for everything that they did and everything that you gave me to let me do what I wanted to do in the fun I had doing it. Enjoy it. Denise, thank you for being by my side and being here and being the first lady that you had to be and doing the things that you wanted to do to guide me, to remind me when I was being stupid, to remind me I had to do what I was supposed to do. To tell me what, you know, I don't think that's a good idea. Also for giving me the advice that I always needed. But more importantly, the three of you giving me the love I always needed to make this happen. And so, so I have nothing that I, that I want more than just the three of you and my entire family. Dad, thank you for everything. Thank you for always being by my side. And all Gina can be here to manage my sister and her family. Michael, Patty, oh, Gina, there you are. And Gina, you're always there for me too. Even though you chose not to live in Floor Park, you put a forgiveness for that. But always racing back and doing what you had to do to be here for us and all the things that you did. Love you. Rick, there you are, my brother-in-law, Rick. He's on the phone with us. Rick, again, Rick loves government, politics, and probably knows thousands more people than I could ever dream to. And if you want to know the real politician in the family, that's it. He's the one who gets things happening and done, and done. So, thank you, Rick. Thank you to the kids. Thank you, guys. Michael, Patty, thank you. I know the kids are working tonight, so I just thank you, guys. Again, Michael, for being by my side every step of the way here. Patty, I know you just came in, but the whirlwind that you came into. You stepped right into it. Bill, thank you so much. I know it's back and forth between here in Florida and now East and everything else, but always being there and doing things for us and being for our family. Thank you. To my other brother, my brother-in-law, my older brother Frankie, thank you so much. I can't tell you how many things Frankie did behind the scenes to get things done, to get things happening. When we had to do something, Frankie came with a band, Frankie came with a band. Frankie is just there every time we need him, and I love you. You're my older brother. And Kathy, the newest member of our family. I know, again, you just came in. It's a whirlwind, it's crazy, but you're stuck with me home now. A lot of women, nobody wants to. Everybody's stuck with their mother, nobody wants to. But to my mom and my brother-in-law. I love you both, and I hope we made you proud. Thank you, guys, so much. Felix, thank you again, always for being here by our side and putting us on, and doing what we do. I am truly blessed to have so many friends. Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, is it Tom?
Is it Tom? Is it Tom in the chatroom?
In the chatroom.
Deborah, thank you so much. Thank you, Deborah Zetto, put in the chatroom. And Deborah is another person that I have good fortune of working with, not only here, but at the water authority. Deborah's very active in many of the organizations that we are, we are associated with. And very quietly, behind the scenes, always there to help us and guide us and provide a comment and give us that heads up. And I can't thank you enough for all the things that you've done. She did right then, Mr. Mayor O'Nagarty. And congratulations to Mayor Fitzgerald and best of luck to the entire village board. So, thank you, Deborah, thank you so much for being with us. And with that, I, okay, everyone needs to put up with a journey.
For something special for all of us Floor Parkers ladies and all of my dear friends.
And with that, I would like to propose to adjourn my last warning. All in favor?
I, I.
Post? Thank you all again for the greatest time.
Oh, what?
Oh, we had to do both the time, that's right, okay. Here we go. We'll open the floor.
This is your first move?
It's my first.
Felix, we're glad you're Franklin Square. When you became mayor, I told you that I would never speak here, as I let you know first. But this is a non-agenda item, so I hope it's okay.
Absolutely, Felix.
I was worried when you first became mayor because I thought you were, since you worked at the town, I have said you would implement a three-minute time limit. You started ringing bells at residents like they knew you were. You did a good job to do that. You listened to your Floor Park residents, did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Felix. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Is there anything else you need to comment tonight? Okay, with that, again. Thank you for the greatest time. Much love. Chatroom? No, there's nothing, man. You got it. There you go. So, those of you on Zoom tonight, thank you for joining us. And again, thank you for giving me the greatest time I've had in my life. Thank you so much, guys. Have a good one. And we will be in the back, for those of you who want to come to the next meeting, we will be in the back with popcorn and a list of complaints for them.